Well, hello everyone and welcome to the Beaverton School Board Candidates Forum. I'm Eric Schmidt. This is a forum hosted by the Beaverton School District, and I will be your moderator for the forum. I am also the proud parent of two Beaverton School District alumni. Tonight, we're going to be hearing from eight candidates vying for four positions on the Beaverton School Board. The contested zones are one, two, four, and five. There are two candidates squaring off in each of those zones. While candidates are elected to represent a particular zone, it's important to note that all Beaverton voters cast ballots in all of these races. So please listen carefully as the candidates introduce themselves and answer questions about the challenges and issues facing Beaverton schools. It is time now for our candidates to introduce themselves with their opening remarks and opening statements. Each candidate will have two minutes for their opening statement, and when that two minutes has expired, they will hear this sound. And when they hear that sound, they have been instructed to stop talking. With that, we now begin with the candidates in Zone One. They are the incumbent Susan Greenberg and the challenger Jeanette Shada. We begin with you, Ms. Greenberg. You have two minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you, and thank you for this opportunity this evening. When my kids were growing up, I became very active in our education system, volunteering in schools, being a leader in the Beaverton Stanford Children, and serving as president of Montclair PTO. I ran for the school board because I'm dedicated to improving the education we provide our students, increasing the resources available to them, and advancing equitable learning opportunities for a diverse population. I'm running for reelection because we've made real progress, but I know there is much more left to do to ensure our students and schools recover from COVID-19 pandemic. Our students, parents, teachers, and community have faced great challenges this year. I will work tirelessly to ensure that our schools have the resources needed for our children and teachers to return to school safely and to overcome any learning loss or setbacks caused by the pandemic. As we resume in-person learning, my top priority is returning children's schools safely, prioritizing student and staff health and safety, and ensuring our children and teachers have the re- That seems to be the same thing. I've always focused on being a voice for underserved students and work to provide resources for at-risk students. As we recover from this pandemic, I will work to help those needing additional support recover from this period of distance learning so they do not fall further behind. In addition to ensuring a smooth recovery, my priorities for our kids are to provide the best education possible for all students, including supporting our at-risk and underserved students, adding new programs for college prep. Boy, that was fast.
And that was fast. Thank you very much. Ms. Shada, you now have two minutes. Ms. Shada, are you there?
Thank you. We had to wait to unmute. Good evening. My name is Jeanette Shada, and I am a mother, grandmother, and an educator of 23 years as a teacher's aide, substitute teacher, and a certified teacher, which has allowed me to understand the needs of our students. They need a strong, safe, and supportive learning environment where they can be challenged and thrive, no matter their ability level, race, gender, or any other box people want to put them in. Teaching the basics of reading, writing, math, art, and music helps our kids learn the skills they need to be contributing citizens in our society. First, we must get our schools open a full five days. The CDC has stated repeatedly that children are not the big spreaders, and three feet is enough spacing. ODE has adopted this. Why hasn't BSD? Second, BSD has adopted two very politically and socially ideological stances that is dividing our students, staff, and parents rather than unifying them. Critical race theory is one such political ideology which is racist. It claims to eradicate institutional racism, but it is indeed reinstating it by asking district employees and students to question an immutable quality like skin color in the name of being equitable. Comprehensive sexuality education is social ideology that is of concern and does not bring a safe and secure environment. This is not to be mixed with sex education, which I do agree with. CSE teaches eight-to-nine-year-olds to masturbate, ten-to-twelve-year-olds to question their sexual identity. These topics are pushing for our children to be sexualized beings rather than developing children. I am for helping all individuals, but we need to do it in the right way where our children are being educated and not indoctrinated. Parents, students, and teachers want to change. Parents want their children to feel welcome to by their teachers rather than shamed. Students want to be able to express their ideas in class without being silenced. Teachers want to be able to go to work without the threat of being fired. As your next school board member, I will work with parents, students, teachers, and community members on solutions that will help get our schools open again and back to being in safe, welcoming, and supportive learning environments they are intended to be. Thank you.
And thank you. We appreciate it. We move on now to Zone Two. We have two candidates who would be new to the school board. Karen Perez de Silva is one of them, and Fuwah Xu is the other. We will begin with Ms. Perez de Silva. You have two minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you. Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Karen Perez de Silva. Yo soy candidata para la zona dos del Consejo Escolar de Beaverton. Uso los pronombres ella y ellas. Hi, everybody. My name's Karen Perez de Silva. I am candidate for Zone Two. I go by the pronouns she, her, and ella. I'm running for, I'm a Latina mom, and like many of you, I want my kids back in school safely as well. I'm working from home and caring for my third grader, fifth grader, and for our high school graduate from last year from BSD that's going to be going to U of O, and our other daughter who is a junior in college this year. I'm also an experienced teacher, administrator, researcher, and doctor. Advocating for equity is at my core. I want safe schools with culturally responsive education for our students and comprehensive sex ed. I want to ensure that our students can thrive and not just survive in our schools. I have led the equity work at the district level and at the national level, and I have experience developing budgets. I have developed the SIA budget. I have developed programs for English language learners in dual language. I have a message for our BSD students, and that is that your race, your color, your religion, your gender identity, your gender expression, sexual orientation, your disability abilities, and coming from multilingual families is actually your superpower. We want to make sure that you can thrive in our schools in a safe environment. I strongly support the Every Student Belongs policy that has come from the state that requires that we provide safe, hate-free spaces for our students. I also surprise, support the state-mandated tribal history, shared history, Holocaust, and ethnic studies. Thank you.
And your two minutes are up. Thank you. Mr. Xu, you have two minutes now.
Hi, everyone. My name is Fuwah, last name Xu, and I'm running for Beaverton School District Board Member on Zone Two. I live in this area for over 20 years. I'm proud this area is so good. And I'm a traditional Asian father with two school-aged children. And I'm a scientist. I understand that extremely important for students to learn critical thinking and uncover biased truths. And also, as a parent, I volunteer in the classroom and the team sports and the science fairs. I really care about the Beaverton School because this school is really good, and we still have about 16% of high school students can graduate from high school. So we need to work to help them. As if I selected as a board member, I was first, first thing I were to do is ask to open the school to all the students four times, five days, as soon as possible, safely and securely. And then we need to listen, parents, students, teachers, and the community members for all background to give us their voice and their suggestion. Also, we need the maximum as a school and the community's resources to support all the students and increasing click career learning and college-level options for all the school. And we need every student can from different backgrounds receive all outstanding education. Thank you very much.
And thank you. We appreciate it. In Zone Four, both candidates would also be new to the board. They are Sarah Lynn Dougal and Sunita Garg. Ms. Dougal, you are first up. You have two minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Sarah Lynn Dougal, and I am campaigning for the Zone Four Board Member position. My family and I have lived in Beaverton for the past 16 years. We have a Beaverton tradition in my family. My husband grew up in Beaverton and graduated from Beaverton High School, where my two oldest also graduated. I am a mother of five. Another child graduates this year, and altogether, my children will still be in Beaverton School District for 12 more years. I have a vested interest in the schools. I am a champion for truth and for doing what is right. It is right that as parents, we have the final say in our child's education, not the schools. The United States Supreme Court has stated the child is not the mere creature of the state. Parents have fundamental rights in their child's education. I believe parents and families should be at the center of education. As parents and community, we can and must embrace our fundamental rights for our children's education. Do not allow your role as parents to be sidelined. Do not submit to being silenced. We are the silent majority, and it's time to make our voices heard. I believe that all schools need to be open full-time, safely, and securely. I am committed to elevating all students because all students matter and should be treated as individuals who are challenged, encouraged, and nurtured. We need to ensure that all students are supported to reach their fullest potential so that they can compete nationally and globally. We have a great school district, one of the best. We have intelligent, creative, committed teachers who challenge our children. I believe in the power of education, and I believe in you. And that is why I'm running for school board, because I believe in you, and together, we will put all children first. Thank you.
Thank you for your statement. We appreciate it. Sunita Garg, you have two minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Beaverton School District, for giving me this opportunity to speak today. I am running for Zone Four. For those of you who don't know me, I have been a Beaverton resident since 1994, where I have lived with my husband and my kids. Both my children went to Beaverton Public Schools, graduated from Cooper Mountain Elementary, then Mountain View Middle School, and then graduated with a diploma, IB diploma from Southridge High School. By profession, I am a CPA, and I have worked in the industry for over 20 years. I believe in education and the value and the importance of education, what it can do for each and every one of us. And that is why I am running. My one and only one agenda in running this race is to make sure that all kids get opportunities and accessibility to get good quality education so that they can have a strong foundation as they step out from high school, where they can go for higher education, colleges, universities, enter the workforce. They be thinkers and ask good questions and be kind, compassionate, and respectful to themselves and others in the society. I plan to do this by supporting our educators, who are the backbone of our school system. They are the ones who will take, who take initiative, and if we support them, if we fund them, if we give them resources, they will work for our children. So we have to support our educators. I plan to do this by listening to parents, their concerns and their issues, by making myself accessible to them. I plan to do this by working with our community, taking the resources that are available for our school district. I plan to do this by working with the government at the city, county, state, and federal level. I want to work to make Beaverton School District the best school district in Oregon. Thank you.
And thank you for your statement. We appreciate it. And in Zone Five, we have the incumbent Leann Larson and the challenger, Yugana Enyania. And Ms. Larson, we will begin with your two-minute opening statement.
Thank you for hosting the forum this evening. My name is Leann Larson, and I currently sit on the Beaverton School Board as well as serving on the Oregon School Board Association Board of Directors. The OSBA boards is made up of school board members from around the state, and through this position, I've been able to give Beaverton a voice at the state level. I'm really proud of the things that I've been able to accomplish during my term on the board, including promoting district work on anti-bias, anti-racist policies to ensure all students and staff are able to thrive and to feel safe at school. While I was president of the OSBA, I worked tirelessly advocating at the state level for sustainable pre-K-12 funding and successfully lobbied for the passage of the Student Success Act. These monies have provided targeted investment for our underserved and most vulnerable students, and we've been able to engage our families of color, non-English speakers, and those with special needs students in this work. I've supported a well-rounded education for every student, including music, extra hours of PE, expansion of our career technical education classes, and fine arts. My experience and relationships around the state with other elected officials set me up to hit the ground running to continue this work. And though my tenure has provided great things for all students, I have a lot more to contribute. I care deeply about the students in this district, and in every decision I make, I ask myself, how will this affect our kids? I'm passionate that all students have access to a great education and an opportunity to succeed in what they want to do after graduation. I've had five children go through this district, and they all received an excellent education. Now, I have one grandbaby, and I want to work hard to make sure that she has the same opportunities. I look forward to your questions and to engaging in this work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. We appreciate it. And now, Ms. Enyania, you have two minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you, Eric. My name is Yugana Enyania. I have lived in Beaverton since 2008. I'm running to represent our underserved communities by championing equity and inclusion. Every student deserves equitable educational experience in our schools. What does this mean to me? It means every student should be provided the tools and resources they need to achieve their academic goals. As a former teacher, I know most students arrive at school with unique challenges. I also know, because I'm a parent of one of such students, I have the lived experience. As a this school district, we have to understand the barriers faced by students with disability, English language learners, and students from minority communities, and provide them with the tools and resources they need to be successful within the classroom and beyond. My priorities include several times to schools. A year into COVID-19 pandemic, my number one priority is how to continue to keep students safe and how to help them catch up with their learning. We need a formative assessment of what the needs of students are going forward. We need to assess where they need to be and how to get them there. I am focusing on finding ways to help students reengage after the pandemic. I would work collaboratively with the school to access resources that will allow for smaller classroom sizes, which would help create individualized learning opportunities for students, including granting access to mental health and academic support for students who need it. I'm also going to prioritize strategies that will grant equitable access to resources for students from historically underserved communities and work to correct racial injustices in our schools, beginning with hiring a diverse workforce and reforming harsh disciplinary policies that have disproportionately impacted minority students. I also plan to elevate new voices. As an immigrant, I know how it feels to be, to not be included, to not be seen, and not have a voice. I want to elevate new voices and promote a policy of inclusion for all students. Every student should be heard irrespective of their background or their sexual orientation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Two minutes goes fast, let me tell you. Candidates, your statements were great. Thank you for bringing them to us. We appreciate it. It is now that time where you, where we find out where you stand on the issues that are important to Beaverton voters. The district solicited questions from community members for several weeks. The district received over 160 questions for our candidates. Generally, the questions fell into five categories or five buckets, if you will. Clearly, we're not going to be able to ask all 160 questions tonight. However, we are going to be asking each candidate a question from each of those five categories, from each of the five buckets. Each of the questions was randomly selected. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond to the question asked, and when that two-minute mark is reached, we're going to have that pesky little sounder come up and tell them that they have to stop. We have asked the candidates not to interrupt each other or impede on each other's times. So let's get started with the questions, and our first bucket tonight has to do with equity. And in that category, our first question will go to the candidates in Zone One, Susan Greenberg and Jeanette Shada. And the question is, and we will begin with you, Ms. Greenberg, how do you feel about schools teaching children about topics such as comprehensive sex education, diversity, and anti-racism? Two minutes, please.
I feel it's important that our children have a broad education, including comprehensive sex, sex education, and I believe in diversity and equity in all our schools and our curriculum, and I'm very proud of being part of the social studies curriculum work group that is working on including history that has not been included in the past, including, you know, talking more about how our black and diverse population has not been treated equally. So that's where I stand on it.
Thank you very much. Ms. Shada, would you like me to repeat the question? Great. You have two minutes now for your answer, please.
Thank you for the question. Comprehensive sexuality education is a very complex curriculum that really needs to have a good lens shown on it because it teaches way more than just the body mechanics and how the body works on a biological aspect. And when we start talking about anal sex or talking about masturbation or talking about having a child question their identity based upon their gender, those are things that are not age-appropriate for our children to learn in the elementary and middle school levels. We need to make sure we have a sex education that teaches about the body mechanics and that teaches what happens going through puberty and, and through their adolescence with a component that teaches how sex works, how an egg and a sperm go together. However, when it comes to critical race theory, we need to be very careful because critical race theory is, is very divisive. It is racist. And they say in the name of equity. We need to understand the definitions between equity and equality. Equity is equal outcome. Now, if we take a GPA, a student who has a 4.0 GPA, and we go and tell that student, hey, you did excellent. You did fantastic job, but your part of your GPA, because this student over here got a 2.0, we need to get part of your GPA to that student to have equal outcome. That is not okay. So we need equality where it's equal opportunity to where every student has the opportunity to have the course materials given to them, and they have that opportunity to work as hard as they want. So if that student earns that A or that four, or a student earns the C or the two, that, that is where they are at in their education, and we should not have to have the equity aspect of it. And understanding the difference of those two words is very important. We do need to be very inclusive in our education, especially with ethnic studies, and it's important to have all ethnicities shown in there in the light of making sure we understand cultural values. We understand how an individual works, not as a collective, but as an individual. And so, critical race theory, we need to get that out of our schools and get in-
I think we're hearing the ringer. I'm sorry. Yeah, two minutes has gone by. We move now to Zone Two, and another question from the community, and that question is, what do you think you could do to help all voices within the community be heard, as well as in disciplinary actions? Oh, wait a minute. Let me start that again. What do you think you could do to help all voices within the community be heard? How can you promote a school district culture of empathy, transparency, and unity right now in this divisive climate? And we will begin with Karen Perez de Silva with her two-minute answer.
Thank you, Eric. First, for all voices to be heard, that's part of, one of the pieces that it's very important to me. I've already started talking with students that have been working on the campaign, then I've been meeting. I had a student summit so far. And in that, students were able to voice their needs, that they've actually reached out to school board members and haven't heard back, or that they've reached out and then they aren't quite sure what's happened. So we've already set up a system where we would be meeting every other month to talk about what is on their minds, and so that I could be responsible for the questions that they're asking me and making sure that I'm addressing those needs of our students. Second, to include the voices of our parents, Hillsborough School District has parent PACs, where they actually bring in parents from different communities and help support them in their leadership development. And then the parents can actually be part, the school board actually rotates and meets with the different parent PACs, and I think that would be something that I would strongly suggest that we do as a school district so that we have a variety of voices. With respect to disciplinary, or not disciplinary actions, you said, right? You changed the question?
That's the next question. Yeah.
Okay. Towards empathy, transparency, I think that it is very important for us to think about our processes as a school board. The information comes out on a Thursday, is my understanding. Then, as school board members, we have Friday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday and Sunday to think about what questions we'll be addressing, or we want to ask the staff. And we need to get the staff the questions before the school board meeting. Then, when we come to the school board meeting, we can only ask certain questions that we've given to the staff for the most part. We want them to be prepared and given that opportunity. So there's some questions in my mind of how we can have transparency and process for families to give us input when there's such a quick turnaround. So that's something that I'm going to be looking at and trying to figure out a system to help support our community have a voice and to ensure that our students have a voice in decision-making.
We are hearing the ringer. However faintly it is, we still hear the ringer. Thank you. Mr. Xu, would you like me to repeat the question? Okay, you have two minutes to answer it.
Thank you for the question. So as I understand, as a school board is like a bridge between the community and the school. So it is important to listen all the parents and the community voice. And I understand if we quickly take a look of the population structure in the Beaverton, also in the best area, it means Zone Two. Beaverton is about 30% of the population is Asian, and and the best is about 40% of the population is Asian. So it is important for an Asian face in the board member because we don't have Asian members in the board. And as I understand, in the, all the candidates, I'm the only one is Asian. Also, school has, most schools have PTC, Parents Teacher Club, or Parents Teacher Organization, and they are very important between the parents and the teacher. So their voice can transfer to, to the school board, and we can listen them. We can send us an email. We can send a letter to all the parents, ask their voice to hurt in the school board, and we can do some decisions after we have their voice. For the other things, I believe everything we need to decide is need to listen to parents, listen to the teacher. listen to the teacher, and listen to the students before we can make any decision, which, because all the education is to the children, and the parents have the power to what kind of education their students, their kids need to receive.
And I thank you for hearing the timer. I really appreciate that. We move now to Zone Four. Sarah Lynn Dougal and Sunita Garg will have this question to answer. We will begin with Sarah Lynn Dougal. And that question is, there are disparities that exist between white students and students of color academically, as well as in disciplinary actions. As a school board member, how will you engage and involve families of color, in particular, in addressing these disparities? Two minutes, please, Ms. Dougal.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I'm really grateful to be here tonight. And regarding the disparities, you know, I haven't, I'm sure, experienced some of the things that these other people have experienced. And so I would want to be able to talk to them, to be able to understand what they're experiencing and be able to work together to come up with a solution. But I am certain that there is discrimination and prejudice, and these are things that are of deep concern we need to overcome. And I really feel that, I believe in the power of education. I believe that we can overcome all things through education. As a mother, I, I work with my children, teaching them to love and to respect, respect yourself, respect others, act with integrity, to do what is right. And as we educate each, our children, we certainly can overcome that. With regards to how people are dealt with, we need to have safety in our schools. It's really important. It's of utmost importance to have safety in our schools. In fact, it makes me think about the SROs, which are the, the officers in our schools, the resource officers. And I believe we need to have those resource officers in schools. I have two boys who were at Beaverton High School when there was a gun brought onto campus. And it was because those resource officers were there that they were able to take care of the situation quickly, as well as the students knowing the resource officers were able to have, take comfort in knowing them. And it was because there was a relationship that had been built. So I think it would be a huge mistake to get rid of the resource officers. We need them. They are a huge support to our schools and to our community. And I think it would be a real mistake to eliminate those from the schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your answer. Sunita Garg, you have two minutes to answer the question. Would you like me to repeat it?
Fine, thank you. As far as the disparities of kids, I can speak from my personal experience. I'm a mother of two kids who were brown, and most of the time, they were the only kids who would be of color. But fortunately for them, the way I taught them to succeed in school was to be proud of what their uniqueness was, and to concentrate on their studies, and to be kind and respectful to themselves and others. And fortunately, we were lucky to have good schools that they got very good education and they were able to succeed. But it doesn't happen for everyone. So what is it that we can do as a school board in making sure that kids do succeed when disparities exist? It's, it's very important that kids can learn to be proud of who they are and what they bring to the path. And diversity doesn't have to be our weakness. It can be our strength. I believe that it is our strength. We go to different countries to learn about cultures. Look at us. We are in Beaverton where a hundred different languages are spoken. We need to respect that. We need to be proud of that. That's what I would say about disparity in academics, is that making sure that kids learn their uniqueness. And, and the board and the school system promoting that. The second thing about the disparity in disciplinary action, I agree with Sarah Lynn that SROs are important, but we need to have some reforms because there are some students who feel intimidated by their presence. So what can we do? And, and to find out myself, I asked administrators, what is their job in the school system? What are they doing? So they are protecting the school. They are protect, deterring crime. And if they are taken out, we have to look at what is our backup system. We can't just take them out because we want our kids to be protected.
And with that, we have
Yeah.
The gong has gonged. So we move now to the candidates in Zone Five, under the category of equity. Ugana Enyanaya and Leanne Larson. This question is for you from a member of our community, and it goes as thus. How have your own life experiences shaped your views on racial inequality in education? And as a school board member, how might your lived experiences influence your advocacy for students and families of color? Ms. Enyanaya, you get your first two minutes, please. We'll get you unmuted here in a moment.
Thank you for that question, Eric. As a woman of color, you don't need to ask me much about equity because it's, it's my lived experience. I have always told the story about my nephew, who was disciplined in school for an accident. He was pulled out of class and taken to the principal's office, and my sister was asked to come and pick him up. And the narrative was that my nephew got very violent and pushed a student. When my sister got there and picked up my nephew and asked him what had happened, and with his little voice, he said, Mom, it was just an accident. This is what happens to students of color. Many times, we, they have been treated unfairly over tiny, minute issues that could have been an accident. Students of color are disciplined at a higher rate than their white peers. And when you look at the policies, our disciplinary policies, they are set up in a way to disproportionately affect and impact students of color, and that results on their outcome in life. And one of my, one of the things that has been mentioned here is the issue of SROs. I was reading the Human Rights Advisory Commission report dated January twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-one. In that recommendation, they said that SROs should be removed from the schools, and we should, the school should explore the effectiveness of SRO programs on school safety, student educational outcomes, and social emotional wellness. Again, please pardon my voice. And based on the information that I have received on SROs, the black and brown students are more likely to be harassed and criminalized by SROs than white, than their white peers. And when I look at this as a parent of a student of color and a student that has special needs, I cannot, in all honesty, tell you that I, I do not support SROs. But I cannot. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Leanne Larson, Ms. Larson, you have two minutes to answer that question. Would you like me to repeat it?
No, thank you.
You bet.
It's a great question, and I am a white woman, obviously. And I did grow up in a very white community in Washington State. So I don't have life experience that people like Ugana has shared about, but I do feel empathy towards that. And as I've raised my kids for over thirty years in the Beaverton District, that is the thing I love about Beaverton. It is diverse. All five of my children had friends that came from different nationalities, different religions, different cultures. And we embrace that in our family, and we learned by getting to know those families and embracing them. As a board member, I'm very sensitive to the fact that all our students do not feel the same as, say, I did when I grew, grew up. And I'm really committed to making sure that our district is an anti-bias, anti-racist educational institution. I would make sure that we fund targeted investments that really help our students, that are underserved, so that they can have the same academic successes that I experienced and that my children experienced. I am in support of inclusive disciplinary practices so that we can remedy the disproportionate disciplinary practices that have gone on in our district. Every month, when the school, particular schools come in front of the board, we ask questions about that. Tell us about what the disciplinary practices are. What are your statistics in your school? What are you doing to overcome those? And I would continue to probe so that our district gets better at that work. I really am about investing in professional development. We need to make sure our staff are well-trained to be able to deal with these racial inequalities.
There we go. And as we close this particular segment of questioning, I would like to add that we do have another segment where we will deal with the issue of school resource officers in, not in general, but in detail. And each of the candidates will be asked to talk about the school resource officers at that time. Our next category, however, has to deal with curriculum, and we will begin in Zone Two. Fu Hua Xu and Karen Perez de Silva will be answering this question. How do you view sex education as a part of health? And Mr. Xu, we begin with you. Two minutes, please.
Thank you for this question. As I understand, everyone need to get this kind of education because it's important for the life. However, all these things should be relative to the age. Different age have different thought, have different knowledge. Some students, if the age is not mature enough, they can, cannot understand what the teacher said, what the textbook said. So they need mature enough to learn same thing. But for the structure, body structure, for the biology information, that's fine. And also, we, we only know for the movies, for the as, at, at, as, you know, their movies have different rate, res, resident. Some is like arty, some is thirteen age before can watch. So similar thing like this, the textbook and educations also need to consider about this. So also need to ask the parents, if parents agree or don't agree this. So I think this is important thing we need to discuss more in the more detail, more in the school board.
Thank you for your answer. Ms. Perez de Silva, you have two minutes to answer the question. Would you like me to repeat it?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Eric. The state of Oregon has provided age-appropriate, age-appropriate state's health standards. I taught kindergarten for over sixteen years, and so know those standards fairly well. They teach about inclusiveness and for each student to feel safe with their own body. They learn about places that safety, you know, people should not be touching their swimsuit areas in private parts. They learn about safety in their relationships and making good choices. Parents should have the choice to opt their students out and do so in the Beaverton School District. Students have the choice to opt out of health curriculum and can do so in the Beaverton School District. I think there's not a lot to say, you know, like, it's a state standard. They're age-appropriate. They're inclusive, and parents have the choice and students have choices of not participating. Thank you.
And thank you for your answer. We appreciate it. We move now to Zone Four. Sunita Garg and Sarah Lynn Dougal will be asked to ask this submitted question. What are your views on teaching age-appropriate sexual health? And what does that mean to you? Specifically, what do you think is appropriate as sexual education for a kindergartner, third grader, fifth grader, or high schooler? Ms. Garg, you begin with two minutes, please.
Sure. So you know, I started looking at this sexual education bit more in detail because people from, everybody was asking this question. And the alarming fact that hits me is that one in nine girls, before their age of eighteen, is going to be abused, sexually abused. It's a fact. We all know about it. And thirty-four percent of that is going to be under the age of twelve. Now you tell me, if you do not teach kids how to protect themselves, how do you expect to protect your kids? If you don't want your kids to learn that, opt out. But don't take it away from kids who need to learn this, who needs to be in a society where they are not safe. There are people who are going to abuse not just girls, but small boys too, right? And I want my kids to be protected. I am not learned enough to tell you what they should be learning at third grade, fifth grade. I'm not a curriculum person. I'm an accountant. But I do believe that teachers, educators who are trained to set a curriculum will set the right curriculum for our kids. I trust that. But as a parent, if you do not trust that, learn what they are teaching, and you teach them. You protect your child. Beaverton School District gives you that choice. Take it. That's all I can say about it. Thank you.
Thank you for your answer. We appreciate it. Sarah Lynn Dougal, you have two minutes for the same question. Would you like me to repeat it?
No, thank you. So yes, we really do need to teach age-appropriate health to our students. And obviously, there is a huge difference between a kindergartner and a third grader and a fifth grader and somebody in high school. You know, Sunita was referring to Aaron's Law, and that is something by state mandate that we are supposed to address. We do not want people to be abused. They do need to know how to protect themselves and defend themselves. That is very important. But it's really important also to understand that curriculum is, the standards are set by the state. But as a city, we actually have a great deal of control over what our curriculum material actually contains. And so what we are saying is simply that we want the material to be age-appropriate. For example, I'm not especially fond of the fact that at, my eleven-year-olds are being taught about anal sex. I don't think that's age-appropriate. Yes, as Karen mentioned, you know, the bathing suit area and stuff like that, that is talked about in kindergarten. That is appropriate, right? So I'm just saying, it's time to revisit it. It's time to look at it and eliminate some of the things that are, in fact, not appropriate and take those out. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Leanne Larson and Ugana Enyanaya in Zone Five are the recipients of this next question, which was submitted by one of our community members, and it goes like this. To help voters understand candidates' educational values and priorities, can you please detail your views about what we should teach beyond the three Rs? And what subjects should be excluded? Specifically, how, if at all, should BSD educators at various grade levels address science and religion? For example, including excluding evolution and creation science, civics, government, foreign languages, history, politics, sex, gender, human reproduction, race, and social justice, and current events? Ms. Larson, you get two minutes to answer that.
Thank you. Well, as I stated in my opening, I really do believe in a well-rounded education. So I believe in giving students the opportunity to have access to music, choir, drama, the fine arts, all of the pottery, photography. If they can't explore between kindergarten and twelfth grade, chances are they won't be finding a time in their life to explore. So I would love to be able to provide as many opportunities, opportunities for our, our students as we can. Of course, most of those need to happen up in the upper grades because of the state standards and the things that we need to get through in elementary and even some of the middle school to be able to prepare them for graduation. But I believe in civics. I believe in government. I believe in all, almost all the things that you talked about would be fabulous to have options for those students to be able to take classes in, even to, to have a class in world religion, to be able to understand what global thought is like as they leave the United States or they go into college and they rub shoulders with people from around the world, to be able to be given some opportunity to have thoughtful discussions in an open classroom about all of those. I'm very supportive of. It always comes down to what can we fund and how many students are available. I love foreign languages. I would love to be able to offer more, but we often don't have the interest at the high school level, so we have to limit what we can. But I would love to open it up. That's why we have a Mandarin charter school and an Arco era Spanish-speaking charter school, because those are wonderful ways to prepare our students. Arco era Spanish-speaking charter school, because those are wonderful ways to prepare our kids to be global learners.
And thank you for your answer. We appreciate it. Ms. Anyanaya, I hope you don't want me to repeat the question, but I will if you would like me to.
That's fine. Thank you. I always believe that students are not just sent to school to learn to read and write. We have to teach them to broaden their minds, to understand that there are cultures that are different from theirs, that there are religions that are different from theirs. So I believe that we can include, that education can be all encompassing. And what I mean by that is that there's a world, there's a bigger world out there. Growing up in Africa, there are places I never went to, but I went there with my mind. And then until I went to the place, in reality, I was able to appreciate it more. But I was also able to understand because I was already taught the culture. I was already taught about those places. So I think that we should make our curriculum a bit more broad. The world has become a global village and we have a diverse universe now, not just diverse city or diversity. We have a very diverse universe and we must allow our students to explore all that we have to teach them, all that is available to them, so that they can be, as Leah said, global citizens. Thank you.
And thank you. And now we hear from zone one. Haven't heard from them from a while, so it's time to do it. Jeanette Shada and Susan Greenberg, the question for you is, what are your thoughts on representing the needs of LGBTQ students in all areas of our curriculum, including health? And Ms. Shada, we'll start with you. You have two minutes for that answer.
Sure, thank you. All students need to be embraced and have their voices heard. When it comes to the health curriculum of teaching comprehensive sexuality education, teachers are not licensed psychologists and licensed psychiatrists. We should not be requiring teachers to be teaching about gender identity and transgenderism. I do understand there are students who have questions about their identity and questions about their sexuality. As a twenty-three-year veteran in education, ten of those being in high school, I worked with many students who had gender identity situations and I was inclusive of them. It did not matter to me what their gender identity was or if they are transgender or whatnot. They were my student and I taught them as my student. And put them on an equal playing field as everybody else, because they have that equal opportunity to have the same access to the education as every other student does. But in a health curriculum, again, teachers are not licensed psychiatrists or licensed psychologists. So why are we putting this burden on the teachers to try and teach gender identity and transgenderism when it could actually be very harmful for the students? We need to put that in the back in the laps of the parents and allow the parents to hire the medical or health professionals that are needed to help the child through those processes. But as a school personnel and as a school environment and as a school district, we need to help students feel included in the schools. And there are many ways to do that. So to me, it doesn't matter where you come from, who you are, you're going to be welcomed and we are going to work with you.
Thank you for your answer. Ms. Greenberg, you have two minutes. Would you like me to repeat the question? Okay. Don't forget to unmute yourself.
So appreciate that unmute thing. Well, I believe that our LGBTQ students should feel safe in our schools. And I, and I also believe that in our health curriculum, we absolutely need to be talking about sexual orientation. We need to be open and honest. Kids come from all different places. They have all different types of identities and, you know, we must embrace them. We must not, you know, say that we just, it's so important that our kids feel safe and that especially our LGBTQ students feel like they can speak out in their classes, that they can feel safe doing that. So I absolutely believe that our health curriculum should embrace LGBTQ curriculum.
Thank you for your answer. Now, as promised, we have a complete category, a complete bucket on school resource officers. And we have one question for all of the candidates in all of the zones. And that question is, can you tell me how extending BSD's contract with school resource officers falls in line with the district's anti-racist efforts? According to this community member who wrote this question, almost all BSD's BIPOC students and staff, when asked, were opposed to the extension of the contract citing SROs caused fear and harm. Several other districts, including Portland and Salem Kaiser, discontinued SROs in their schools. So we will begin in zone four. Sarah Lynn Dougal and Sunita Garg. Ms. Dougal, you have two minutes, if you would like it, to answer that question.
Thank you. Well, first of all, the most important thing that we need to do is to keep our students safe. We want them to be safe. I just gave you an example a moment ago about my sons with the SROs in Beaverton High School. When a gun came onto campus, that is not a standalone experience that has happened and continues to happen on all levels of campuses. And we need to be able to protect our students. So that's the most important thing. I agree with Sunita that there may be some retraining that could happen. But you know what? I actually went to talk to the sergeant because I had heard some conversations around SROs and I asked him, the Beaverton sergeant over SROs, I said, what are the statistics? What have you guys done that you are, that is causing, are causing people to be upset and concerned? And the statistics indicate that there is nothing that they have done. There may be things that have happened across the nation, but the statistics that they showed me indicate that there is nothing that has happened where of concern. And I see that Karen is shaking her head and I would encourage her to bring that forth. But the police, I talked to the sergeant and the statistics show that there was not anything that had happened. And I have a question. If we get rid of the SROs, then what? What are we going to have? The sergeant was concerned about the fact that, you know, as a voting population, we said, yeah, let's go ahead and allow cocaine and mushrooms. Well, they are anticipating an explosion of drug use at the high schools. Again, if we don't have somebody there, then what? We need something. And by the way, they're being paid for by the Beaverton City. And if we get rid of them, then the next thing that we do is going to have to be paid for by the Beaverton School District. And so seems to me like, yeah, we should probably continue having a discussion about this, continue figuring out how to make it work. But I, having had children in school where a gun was present, I was very grateful that they were protected. Thank you.
Thank you. Sunita Garg, you have two minutes for this same question.
Thank you. So this is what I feel. SROs provide a good service where, I mean, the main goal is safety of our kids. We all want that. Whether we want SROs or we don't want SROs, how it is going to be done is what we have to decide. So I asked the superintendent, what happens, what is it not superintendent, one of the administrator, what is our backup plan if we take out SROs? So this is what I found, that SROs are called in when we have issues that the school cannot handle. And in the case where we do not have a person who's supposedly an SRO, it would be a random officer on call. So I think reform is needed because people do, are intimidated and they are probably treated differently. Maybe not by the SROs in Beaverton School District, but a conversation, a dialogue is needed where we can make the parents, the students, safe in their presence, where we have clear-cut understanding, when should a school be calling an SRO? And they shouldn't be called in for anything or everything. There has to be a clear-cut procedure. And a dialogue is needed, a reform is needed. Whether it is with the SRO or a police officer, the safety is the main, main concern of all parents, all community. I think whether BIPOC or non-BIC, we want the safety for our kids and how we get it done is the dialogue that we need to do.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And now we'll go to the candidates in zone five. I have my numbers correct. Ms. Anyanaya and Ms. Larson, the question, I can ask it again if you would like. If not, I'll just keep going here. Ms. Anyanaya, you are first up with two minutes for school resource officers.
Thank you, Eric. I know that there is data that supports the inequity of the presence of SROs in schools. I also know that there is data that supports that there is racial disparities in the way they handle students. And I was talking about a recommendation by the Human Rights Advisory Commission dated January twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. They specifically said that SROs should be removed from schools. They are not right. They are not the right program for our students. And they also mentioned to explore effective, the effectiveness of this program and school safety. We have to explore students' educational outcomes and their social, emotional wellness, especially at this time. They have been isolated for one year. When they return to schools, they're going to need mental health support. I don't think, and I'm speaking from the perspective of a parent of a black student, bearing in mind that we have heard from our black and brown communities that the presence of these very SROs make them uncomfortable. Are we not going to ignore the concerns of these communities and insist on putting SROs there, knowing fully well their impacts and their effects on our students? As a parent of a black student who fits into the mold, my son is, again, black and on special needs. He fits into the mold of the target of SROs inequitable practices. As a parent of that child, I cannot in all honesty ignore this data. And I cannot, the information I have is alarming for me. And I am leaning towards removing SROs from schools. However, I'm open to have more discussions around these issues, a lot more dialogue, what it's going to look like, what reforms we're going to have on our SROs. But for now, I am leaning towards removing them from the schools from the perspective of a black parent. Thank you.
Thank you for your answer. Leann Larson, your thoughts on SROs? Two minutes, please.
Well, as Sarah Lynn said, it is important for our community to know that they are completely almost fully funded from the Beaverton Police Department and not from our general fund. But I am empathetic towards the creator of this question. I do want to be available to listen to black and brown students and how SROs make them feel. At this point, though, I do believe that safety is the number one priority. And so I do believe that they belong in our schools, but I really do believe we need major reform. I'm not really sure what that looks like because I haven't had great suggestions come forward as I've been seeking those out. But I would love to sit down with some of those black and brown students and even the creator of this question and find out what, what would make them feel safe. I do think they have a place in our school. And one of the issues is I don't think that they've been trained well on the educational side and what their role ought to be in our school. And I think the different schools are using them differently. And that can cause disproportionate discipline problems. I would love to see the roles, the responsibilities, what we need them for, to be clearly defined, to make sure our staff clearly understands that, our students even understand that, and that that is rolled out equally in all of our schools. But I'm very interested in hearing from these students that feel fearful. I hear that and I want to know what can we do so that we can eliminate that fear and help them to feel safe? And yet, for the families that really do want SROs there, we need to listen to that aspect as well and bring it together and find some sort of collaborative solution for our SRO program. And I'd love to see that happen over the summer, so that when schools open in the fall, when we start a new program, we can roll it out.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Let's go now to zone one, Susan Greenberg and Jeanette Shada. And ladies, I can ask the question, but I think you've got a pretty good idea what it is. We'll start with you, Ms. Greenberg. You have two minutes.
Thank you for the question. Well, here's, I've thought a lot about this because it's come to the school board this year, of course. With what I've seen nationally, with the unfortunate death of George Floyd by a police officer and the conviction of that police officer, I think it's important to look at that because that is what our kids are seeing, is a police officer killing a black man. I don't think we can close our eyes to that. I think our students of color especially do not feel safe in our schools. And I think it's, you know, with our SROs. And I feel like we need to definitely have, you know, there is reasons at times to have SROs in our schools, there's no doubt. But we definitely need to have not just training, but a real embrace of equity and looking at it from that lens, as well as looking at it from a mental health perspective, that if there's issues that can be, a social worker should be dealing with versus a SRO, that's where we need to look first versus going to a SRO. So I definitely think that there needs to be some reform. I think that our schools need to look at, again, our mental health providers in our schools to help with de-escalating issues that might be happening. But definitely there are times when a police officer is needed.
Thank you for your answer. Jeanette Shada, you have two minutes on the same question. Are you unmuted?
There we go. All right. Thank you for the question. I have worked on high school campuses for the majority of my career as a certified teacher. And I have had very positive interactions or seen very positive interactions with SROs and students on every single campus I have worked on. Now, are there kids who will make poor choices? Of course. Is an SRO needed for some of those poor decision-making skills, especially when it comes to fights and breaking up fights? Absolutely. Are there, there are many different instances where SROs actually created great bonds with students that I have seen, especially working on an alternative campus where the students are already having some discipline issues because of either family situations going on that are very stressful or whatever, whatever their life situation is. Kids come to school with baggage and we have to learn to work with kids with that baggage that they bring to school with. But SROs that I have seen in my experience have actually created relationships with these students. And on the BSD website with the School Resource Officer Report, BSD even admits there are no big instances of disparities and whatnot within the SRO program. And as mentioned before, the SRO program is funded mostly by Beaverton Police Department or the Washington County. A very small portion of the budget comes out. When you're talking about mental health workers, absolutely, we mean mental health workers. But when you have two kids fighting, and if you've ever seen students fight like I have, it is very difficult to get them broken up sometimes. And SROs have that training in order to get them broken up that teachers, administrators, and mental health professionals don't. But once we get them broken up, then we could go to the mental health.
Thank you for your answer. We move now to zone two. Karen Perez de Silva and Fu Hua Xu. Ms. Perez de Silva, we will begin with you. Your thoughts, please, in two minutes on the SROs.
I agree with Sarah Lynn, sorry about Sarah Lynn, that safety is a number in Leann Larson's, that safety, and many of you actually probably, that safety is the number one priority for our schools. I worked as a district-level administrator supporting students when SROs were called for situations for which SROs and police were not needed. It is not clear the role of SROs in BSD. We need to reform or to relook or to take them out of our schools if that's what our students and community choose. I don't believe that SROs are culturally responsibly trained to deal with situations for our students of color and for our diverse group and populations of students. They don't have the right quality of training for this. I don't believe that SROs would be the first person I would want to come and talk to a student who's found marijuana or a vape pen. You'd want to be thinking about who's going to be that supportive person. You'd want to be thinking about who's gonna be that supportive person that can work with the student and their family to get the student the support they need to, for addiction or for psychological supports, you know, that they might need. I don't think that, in my experience as a brown-skinned mother and a long-term educator, I do not believe that SROs have the training they need. We do definitely would need to relook at this issue as a school board and involve our community and our students. That's what I would say about that. I also want to take a minute of my time to say that students who are gender diverse, or being gender diverse is not an illness. We do not need psychologists. We need inclusion of our students so that they feel safe in our schools and our community. In no way is being a gender diverse student or have gender, a gender expression or being part of, you know, being part of the LGBTQ2SI plus community an illness. So it's not something that we need to cure. Thank you.
And thank you. And Mr. Shu, you have two minutes to talk about this subject.
This is a really good question. I, I talked with one student, a chair of Asian, Asian American Student Group in the school. And he told me STO is very, very important for the student, even for more for the Asian group because currently there is a lot of attack to Asian people in big cities. And the more and the more this kind of thing happened. And a lot of Asian student, Asian family parents worry about how can students save in the school? And I was taught that would like to more STO appeared in the school, in the school. So I think STO, the officer need to talk with the student, mostly in Asian student, tell them they are safety and tell them how can be safety. So I think STO should be in the school and very good for the Asian, at least for Asian people, student. Asian student is one of the race in the Beaverton people group. And I think this also be help for the diversity in the community and the safety for everyone. Thank you.
And thank you. And now our fourth category, our fourth bucket of questions has to deal with returning to school. And we will go to zone five for this question. Leanne Larson, you will have the opportunity to answer it first. And that question is, what is your plan for addressing learning losses in kids, especially in minority, housing-challenged, and those in poverty who have most assuredly suffered learning losses with a CDL-only option for more than a year? Will you follow science and be vocal regarding kids returning to school fall 2021? How can families plan if that is not stated now? Two minutes.
Wow, you cram five questions into one. So I definitely agree that a lot of our students are coming with some emotional, social, mental disparities as they start back into school. There's a lot of anxiety around that. So I would start by investing the federal funds that we see that are coming through in summer school. We need to use those to support students that need extra supports to make up for some academic losses. We need to use it for mental health supports and other areas that these students need to be brought up to speed for where, where they need to be to start in the fall. I am a hundred percent wanting schools to open full-time, five days a week, starting in the fall. And that is our plan at this point, and I hope all our, our families begin that planning process. We have, because of the Students Success Act, we have some additional funds that we have worked really hard to get for our schools. And they are specifically targeted for the class of students that you have talked about. And I've worked on that subcommittee, we've met with families, we've gathered what the community wants and what their values and what their students need. And now we just need to do the work. We need to put the funds to action. We need to get our mental health teams that we're creating with social workers and psychologists and counselors for each of our schools and make those available to our students. And we need to really invest in some additional academic supports so that we can continue to support those students that really need that extra help. So I am a hundred percent in for returning in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Iniania, would you like me to repeat the question? Okay, you have two minutes to answer it.
Thank you. I am also, I can't wait for school to reopen full-time. You know, it has been challenging the past couple of months. However, we have to tread carefully and do it safely. And as they go back to school, whenever that would be, I know that the needs of students are going to change in a very unique way. Again, being away for a year can do a lot of, can do some matrix on students. So they're coming back with all kinds of needs, which would vary. And what I would, I would support as a board member is to create a way for our students to be assessed, have formative assessment of what they need and also how to get them to where they need to be. I can speak for myself, my son has had some learning loss over the months. He's no longer reading at grade level. I want to see the school district re-engage students, focus on creating programs that can get students re-engaged into school, programs like enrichment activities, even music programs, safe place for them to play, physical education, drama, just to open up their minds and just to get them back into the rhythm that they have lost the past one year. So I'm gonna work collaboratively with a school to be able to access resources that would allow for smaller classroom sizes that would help them have individualized learning opportunities for, for students that need it and also grant access to mental health support and academic support for students who need it. Thank you.
Thank you for your answer. This next question goes to the candidates in zone one, Jeanette Shada and Suzanne Greenberg. And the question is, as it came to us, as you know, the families of roughly fifty percent of BSD elementary students chose to remain in CDL for the remainder of this school year. White students were the only racial ethnic group with more than fifty percent of students choosing to attend hybrid in-person learning. It is expected that COVID-19 vaccines for children under the age of twelve will not be approved until 2022. Considering those three pieces of information, do you support a CDL option at BSD neighborhood schools for 2021, 22? Ms. Shada, you have two minutes.
In a, in the BSD district, we have the FLEX option, which is a form of CDL. It's specifically for students who want to have school outside of the brick-and-mortar building to have it in their own home on the computer. And so that option is available to students and they can enroll in that option. For all the other students, if we keep schools shuttered for this next year, we are going to continue to do harm to our students. As an educator, I have seen firsthand what happens when a student is shut out of the schools and when a student went from a straight A student to a straight F student. That would be my son. I've also seen it on a level of an educator as well, where I was working with foster youth kids who travel from home to home to home. And sometimes they miss school for weeks on end because their, their lives are just thrown up in the air, unfortunately. And these students need to be back in school. Then we bring in special education students who need those special services and their IEPs and 504s have not been serviced appropriately over this last year and a half of shuttering the schools down. And that's a school year and a half. The, the statistics show for every one year of school that a child does not go to, they get two years behind. And right now, there is a study out among third graders, a Stanford University study, to where third graders have lost thirty percent of their reading ability because of the CDL options that are there. We must get kids back into schools. We do have the FLEX option for students who want to go back into school through online learning. We also, there is also options for students to go to online charter schools as well outside of Beaverton School District. So there is school choice options available to families.
Thank you for your answer. Ms. Greenberg, you have two minutes.
Thank you for the question, Eric. I absolutely think that our students, when it's safe to go back to school, should go back to school full-time. I, I don't think that our school district can afford to do CDL for those that want to stay, you know, in that environment. It's expensive. And when I look at what our teachers have been through, and I know it's very difficult when I look at elementary school teachers, when they're, they have in the hybrid situation where they have students there in the morning and in the afternoon, they're teaching online to both the students that were in the classroom in the morning as well as those who are learning online. So it's a difficult thing to do. And I think that is, we need to get our kids back in school full-time. In terms of, you know, if there needs to be an option for kids, I, I agree with, with my opponent that we need to have FLEX. And luckily, we have that option in our school district. And I'm very happy that, that started this year and it will, it seems to be growing and doing well. And I'm glad that option is for, therefore, those students that don't feel safe going back to school next school year. I also think it is so important for our students to be back in school just for the social and emotional reasons. They need to have social interactions with other kids. It's really important. They've missed out on that for over a year, it's gonna be a year and a half before many of them. Let's say fifty percent of the elementary school kids will be in school with their fellow peers. So I'm really excited for that to happen in the fall. You know, there's no question that there's no easy answer and this pandemic has taken a toll on all of us. But I do think, you know, all adults will be vaccinated and students over sixteen-year, children over sixteen years old will be vaccinated.
And with that, we thank you for that. The question under returning to school for zone two is, and I am quoting now, "It has been apparent this week as in-person school has succeeded despite continued struggles with COVID. BSD could have reopened schools much easier, much earlier and should have. Despite seventy percent of American schools being open, at least in hybrid at the time, BSD was among the last to open. Now, we are only allowing students to attend part-time." That's according to the person who wrote this question. "What do you do to put students first and to lobby for in-person learning to restart? What did you do to put students first and lobby for in-person learning to restart? Second, will you commit to having school open five days a week full-time in the fall?" And Mr. Shu, we will begin with you, you have two minutes.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for the questions. I think we need open school as I first statement said, that five days full-time and it's safely and security, safety is for the medical problem. And the security is for the, we, I already talked before, some attacker for the Asian American peoples. For the open school, we need, because of the COVID-19 problem, we need like a monitor everyone in the school and have trained professional teams to handle this problem. And the hospital helpers say we can open school, can, can, you know, every student can safely can go to school for this for, and also if we can, can be earlier since, since terms. Because most people will get as a vaccine soon. And as I understand, as I know, the mask can be take off if you already have the vaccine. So it is important for students get back to school, every get, get, everyone get as a vaccine. And every school have the prepared, very good monitor and the trend and the hospital help. This school student should be very safe back to school.
Thank you for your answer. Ms. Perez de Silva, you have two minutes.
Thank you for unmuting. I'm a hundred percent for reopening schools, five days a week, full-time, for goodness sakes. I've been like, you know, I've had my girls at school trying to work and help them at the same time. And it's very, very difficult for not just myself, and I have my parents' help, but for a lot of people in our school district, if we can do that safely. I'm very thankful to the Beaverton School District Board for allowing our adults to get vaccinated before we opened. I think that is what made it safer for us to go back, for our students to go back. I am thankful that they allowed us to have the option for CDL or to go back for hybrid. My parents, I take care of my parents. And they didn't have, when we had to make that choice, we didn't have the vaccine for my parents or for the adults in my home. And so it wasn't safe to go back for us. I did not want to risk my parents' health, our life in that sense. And my daughter also has asthma. And so we were very concerned in that way. So I'm thankful that they allowed the teachers to get vaccinated and that we had that option. But when we go back in the fall, our students need to be back with other students. Our students need, you know, for that social emotional support. We need to get them in the hands of our teachers and doing small groups and reading and playing on the playground. So I'm all for it. I, for, as far as our families of color not returning, what I've heard from our families of color, specifically, like for example, for our Latino families, is that they couldn't take any more time off. The systems that they'd had set up for CDL allowed them to make sure that their children would not get COVID at this time with the precautions that they were taking at home. If they were to send back their child to school and their child got COVID or exposed to COVID, they would have to take two weeks off of school to take care of work, to take off care for their child. And they couldn't afford that, they would lose their jobs. And there's a large percentage of our community of color that has not gotten their vaccines. And so now that we're all sixteen and over can get vaccines, I think that more people would be wanting to go back. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And our final question in the returning to school category goes to the candidates in zone four, Sanita Garg and Sarah Lynn Dougal. And Ms. Garg, you will have the opportunity to answer this question first. And it is, what would you like the in-person school experience to look like for BSD students in September? And how will you work to make that happen? Two minutes, please.
Thank you, thank you for that question. Everyone that I have talked to, whether it's parents, educators, we all want kids to go back to school safely. And I am very hopeful that it will happen. It was nice to hear President Biden speak yesterday saying that life will return to normal now that a lot of people have gotten vaccinations by July 4th. And I am hoping that that would be the case. But we know with COVID, things have changed, so we have to keep safety first. And I, if it is safe, I will do everything that is in my power as a board member to make sure that five days back to school happens for parents, for teachers, for kids, for students to make sure that they learn, their learning gaps are closed. You know, there will be a lot of kids coming back to school with social and emotional problems because being away from school, knowing to make sure that they are following the strict guidelines. We have to make sure that we have resources and funding for the schools to make sure that kids get the help if they need and what help they need. We invest, we have federal essence fund, funding for the schools, one-time funding that we can use to help us transition from CDL to full-time in-classroom learning. And I hope we use that funding effectively and efficiently so that it goes for our kids so that their best potential comes out and it helps the teachers and make sure that our classrooms are safe for them. Thank you.
And they tell me that old people don't follow directions. I'm unmuting right now. Ms. Dougal, you have two minutes to answer, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, thank you. Well, first of all, I have the utmost faith in our teachers. We have phenomenal-
Well, first of all, I have the utmost faith in our teachers. We have phenomenal teachers. And they are capable and willing to, and they've already shown us their ability to be able to bring the kids back into school safely and to engage with them and to help them to have a successful experience. Hats off to our teachers. They are phenomenal. Second, we have phenomenal families and students. They want to be back. They want to participate. They want to support. And we need to include them in this discussion and make sure that they are a part of the solution because they want to be and, and they will be an asset to us. I am concerned about the 1,300 students who pulled out of Beaverton School District. If you multiply that out, you know, that's about $10,000 per student. That's about $13 million that we don't have right now because those students have pulled out in either gone to private schools or to homeschooling or other such scenarios like online schools. And we need to make sure and get them back. They haven't been reached out to. Is somebody going to ask them back? So I hope so because at this point, that hasn't happened. And I know for myself that there are people right now who are planning to move out of state. There are people right now who are saying that they will stay in homeschool. There are people right now who are not considering moving back to Beaverton School District and staying in, outside of schools. And so we need to make sure and get these people back. And one way that we can do that is to elect me. Oh, is that a plug? No, but really, I'm talking to a lot of voters. I'm knocking on doors. And they are very excited about what we're talking about, getting back to basics, making sure that the kids are going back to critical thinking, not being taught what to think, but how to think. And they really want to return to schools, but there's some issues that they're concerned about besides just COVID. And that's why I believe people will be electing me. Thank you.
Thank you for your answer. You made it just under the wire. And now our fifth and final category for the evening is the miscellaneous or other bucket. And we will begin in zone one with Susan Greenberg and Jeanette Shada. And the question is, and I'm quoting now, "Numerous studies have shown that starting high school after 8:30 AM leads to better graduation rates, grades, and overall ability to learn. Would you support having the Beaverton School District shift the high school starting time to 8:30 AM? If the answer is no, because the district uses the same buses for high school and middle school and needs to start one earlier, would you put a bond measure on the ballot to raise the money needed to pay for additional buses? Ms. Greenberg, we will begin with you. You have two minutes.
So the answer is not no. But there's a because, you know, we've talked about this over the years. And I think the difficulty with having schools start for high school, because I understand that high school students, their body clock is, you know, they want to sleep in, they want to start later. I get that. But it's the athletics part. So I think in order to redo the schedule, and I understand that, yes, we could probably redo the busing to kind of change the order of when students go to school. It's a matter of how you figure out athletics. And if Beaverton School District's doing that and no other school districts changing their time, then it creates a cascading effect of participation in sports. And, you know, so I think it all has to be thought out before something like that happens. Again, I, you know, philosophically, don't necessarily disagree with the fact that high school students probably would do better. And if they could sleep in and started their day later. But I also think that logistically, and if, if students want and they need extracurricular activities, then it's almost impossible to have the day start late.
Thank you for your answer. Ms. Shada, your two-minute response, please.
Thank you for that. Yeah, this has been the age-old debate, even in the high school classroom. I had my students actually do a debate on starting schools early, and it was a very interesting debate that we had. And, but Ms. Greenberg is right. There are a lot of logistical issues in order to get schools, high school specifically, to move later. Not impossible, though. And the, the issue of having all the other districts, because you do have to have sports start on a certain time and things like that, is to take it to the legislature, actually, and have the legislature help with that to draft a bill to where all high schools can start at a certain time. That way, all the sports then will start at that time because it's a statewide and we have something like 190-something districts in the state. And so we would have to coordinate with all those districts in that realm. So a legislative aspect would be good. But it is actually proven through studies that when high school students wake up later, because they naturally stay up later, not all, but on the norm, as they say, that they will, they do need to sleep in a little bit later, and they are much more refreshed in the morning when they're able to do that. So, yeah.
Thank you. Wait till those high school students get to be senior citizens. They'll find out about getting up early. Yeah, no kidding. Okay, we move now to zone two, Karen Perez de Silva and Fuha Xu. And the question for you folks is, what do you see as BSD's greatest strengths? And how will you leverage and amplify those strengths for the benefit of the entire community during your school board tenure? Ms. Perez de Silva, we begin with you. Two minutes, please.
I would say that our biggest strength are students. We have a really diverse student population with lots of passions and, you know, everything from, you know, the, the arts, the sports, the music. They're just phenomenal. I've been working with some of the students during this campaign and before this campaign. And their passions are around, like the things that they're worried about are homeless students. That's what they brought up for me. They brought up that they're concerned about the mental health of their colleagues, and they're working on Senate bills to pass so that we will have pilot programs to support screenings for all of our students in certain grades so that their colleagues can be supported. I think the strengths of the BSD School District also include the academics. Our reading, writing, math are strong. We can still improve on our systems. We have students with dyslexia that need supports that we aren't currently providing to all of them. We have students with, that are English language learners that are not getting all the support they need. We see that in some of the areas where we are strongest. We also have our students of color or students in poverty that are not succeeding in those areas. So we want to include and make sure that we're addressing the opportunity gap. Currently, we have over 10% of our students that have incompletes, no pass. And so we need to look at how we're going to accelerate our learning. But our teachers, our staff are another one of our strengths. They're very talented. And they are there and they care about our students. So first our students, then our staff and community, and then the knowledge that all those community members that our community as a whole holds, I think, is what makes Beaverton a place that we all want to live. Where we all want to.
Thank you for your answer. We appreciate it. Mr. Xu, you have two minutes.
As I stand in my opening, I think most important is the community. How can help the school student? How can help the schools? Because a lot of students currently cannot go to school and they only stay home. They have a lot of energy to spend, need to go to some place like sports meeting, sports or other things needed to do. And I think this is for student is difficult stage because they cannot face-to-face communicate with teachers, with students, with other friends, and only can stay home. So I think this is very, very difficult for each family, each student, and they do need to back to school. So community also need to help and to, you know, help school, help student to, to get, get everything back to normal, back to school. And this is very, very important for us, also for the board, the school board. How can school board help them get the community to support us, to support the school? This is really, really important for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Xu. Appreciate your answer. This next question goes to the candidates in zone four, Sarah Lynn Dougal and Sunita Garg. Ms. Dougal, you'll get first crack at it, and I'm going to quote the question as it came into us. "I believe that we need a district-level administrator to oversee our fine arts programs who can support our teachers to create thriving, topically diverse, inclusive, and equitable fine arts programs from PK to 12, which are a crucial part of a well-rounded educational experience for all students. Do you support the important addition of a fine arts administrator in our district-wide educational leadership? Two minutes, please.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I love the arts and my family loves the arts. I've been in Beaverton for 16 years and I have volunteered to do, to teach art literacy for 14 of those 16 years. And my family loves going and seeing all the plays and musicals that the schools put on. So the arts are very important. They really are what help us to become a well-rounded person. Can you imagine having life without music and without the arts? What a plain life it would be. So the arts are extremely important. You know, this is a question, it's an excellent question, and it's something I'm really going to have to learn more about. I think it's going to require getting some more dialogue around this, learning more about what this position requires. I know this is a position that, that people have wanted to have filled for quite some time. I don't know why it has not been filled, and I do not know the details around it. So I would need to get feedback from the community, probably from organizations like Beaverton's Friends of Music, who are very active in promoting the arts and the students and from the past board members too, to find out, you know, what, what is this conversation? Why has it not happened? I'm sure part of it has to do with financing. You know, there's always the ability to juggle things around in a budget when something is a priority. And so I would certainly consider it. Thank you.
And I thank you for your answers. Sunita Garg, your two minutes, please. You'll be muted. There you go. Almost. We're getting there.
Thank you. I would support this position 100% fiscally, if it's fiscally possible. Because music is very important. Like I always say, I support good quality education, which includes giving access to the kids for music, extracurricular activities. So if our budget allows it, 100%, I will support this position. As I know it, I think this position was already agreed upon or had been approved, but COVID happened and it was not, it didn't happen. So a rate, making sure that all the music programs are well-supported, this position will help do that. My kids have benefited from the music program from the schools. And if it is needed, if it is going to be helpful, for sure, I would support. That's my answer.
And I thank you for that answer. And the last miscellaneous question of the evening goes to the candidates in zone five. Uganda Enyania and Leann Larson and Ms. Enyania, you will begin to, with the answer to this question. "An individual school board member has no authority. Only the board as a whole can make decisions for the district. What skills or traits will allow you to contribute to effective operations of the board as a whole? Could you support a board decision you did not vote in favor of? Why or why not? Two minutes, please.
Thank you. That's a very good question. Okay, so to be successful as a board member, you have to have the ability to think strategically. And strategic thinking and planning involves identifying priorities for the school and also establishing goals and objectives and finding resources and allocating funds to support any decisions made by the board. That said, if I'm not, if I did not support or if I was not present and a decision was passed, if it's something that would benefit the school and would benefit the students especially, because it's all about the students for me. If it's something that benefits the students, I would be in support of it, even if I was not there when that decision was taken. So for me, being on the board or having the opportunity to serve on the board is all about putting the interest of students first. And if that interest is served, then I wouldn't have any issues with any decisions that were made in my absence. Thank you.
And thank you for your answer. Ms. Larson, as soon as you're unmuted, you get two minutes.
Thank you. This is a great question because I will say this is reality of being on a board of seven different-minded individuals that come from all sorts of backgrounds and have all sorts of views. I believe you need to do your homework to be a good board member. You need to ask great questions so that you can find out all of the issues around what the decision is going to encounter. You need to be a good listener because if you can't listen to other people that differ or maybe have something additional to add to the decision, then you're not going to be able to participate fully. And then you have to be a collaborative board member that is willing to work together. It's, the question is absolutely 100% correct. You do not make anything isolated as an island. It takes seven people and honestly, it takes four to pass a decision. So you have to learn to work collaboratively. And I will say we have board working agreements. And this comes up as one of the major things. And I have been on both sides of decisions. I've been on the winning side and I've been on the losing side. And as a whole, no matter what side you're on, you have to support the decision that was passed by the majority of the board. That is making, that makes you a good board member, even if you don't agree with it because that's what the majority of the board has decided. And then you go about and you work it through and you help support it and find out what ways you can continue to work. And maybe you didn't have the best idea, but you do have to support it. And I can attest that that's happened several times in my term.
And I thank you for that answer. And with that answer, we have come to the end of the questions and answers. And I have to say, excellent work, candidates. Thank you for your responses. This has been very, very interesting. We will conclude this candidate's forum tonight with closing statements. Each candidate will have two minutes for their closing remarks. And again, that pesky timer will be used if need be. We will start in zone five. Uganda Enyania, you have two minutes for your closing statement.
Wow, it's been such a fun night getting to know all the candidates. And it's been great being a part of this forum. I am an immigrant and I look different. I sound different. My voice is not the usual voice you hear on the school board. But our community is tired of the usual. We are tired of the status quo. Representation is important. Equity and inclusion is important as well. This I have learned in my service to my community on the Beaverton Diversity Advisory Board, advising the mayor and the city council on equity and inclusion strategies that strengthen connections among diverse communities in Beaverton. Also, as a commissioner with the Oregon Commission for Women, I have advocated for bills that will benefit our minority and low-income communities. I represent the immigrant families and the 100 different languages spoken in Beaverton. But more importantly, I am bringing representation for the low-income and minority families, for the immigrant families, trying to navigate through the system, trying to get access to resources like individualized education program for their students so they can reach an equal outcome with their peers, just like I did when I moved here as a single mother with a child with special needs. I know what it means to be different. I'll be an advocate for students who are presumed different due to their race, religion, sexual orientation, or gender identity. I am committed to equity policies that will create an inclusive environment for all students to thrive in our school districts so we can achieve equal outcomes for every student. We can never have equality until we have equity. And when we have equity, our society benefits. I will not claim to be the best candidate for zone five, but I am the candidate our community needs at this time. I am the candidate our community deserves at this time. I am the candidate that will bring all voices to the table. I hope you support me and would for me. Thank you very much.
And thank you for that. Leann Larson, your two-minute closing statement, please.
Thank you for having us on this forum tonight. I believe my experience and proven leadership make me the best candidate for zone five on the Beaverton Board. I've worked hard these past few years. I've been a collaborative team player. And I spent countless hours lobbying for more funding for our district. and I spent countless hours lobbying for more funding for our district. But I have a lot of priorities for next year. First, as we talked about tonight, we need to get our students back in the classroom and we need to do it safely. Secondly, we need to continue to engage our underserved and even expand our outreach to ensure the additional funds from the Student Success Act continue to benefit our most struggling students and provide the educational and mental health supports they need. Third, we need to continue the equity work in our district, including attracting and retaining staff that reflect our student population. I also believe we need to develop an equity lens at the board level so that we scrutinize all our decisions under this lens to ensure we are doing more than just talking about equity, but really engaging in this important work. We need to continue to invest in a well-rounded education for all our students and make sure that no matter where you live in our district, you will receive the same opportunities at all the levels. I'd love to see the student voice elevated in our district even more than we do now and explore the opportunity of having a student sit and possibly vote on our school board. Finally, we need to make data-driven decisions and fund the programs that increase our student achievement and defund those that do not. We need to focus on investments that close our achievement gap and increase our graduation rates. My experience in leadership and love for kids make me the best candidate for the board. I want to continue this important work and I can only do it if you'll vote for me on May eighteenth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Moving on now to zone four, Fuha Chu, your closing statement in two minutes, please.
I mean, some pool, not some fall. Thank you. Uh, I will say, uh, education is very, very important, which I already said, uh, for the school, for the child, it's built as a foundation of children's future life. And this children will build our country for the future. And this country, we live and we laugh. And the children need to learn how to think, but not what to think, which means critical thinking and they need to learn speed as, uh, science, technology, engineering, art and the mess. I gave you some fact in the thirty-five countries, uh, school, uh, fifteen years of student, uh, math score, the highest is fifty-five, fifty-four. But American is only number twenty-eight, which is less than the average year's scores is only four hundred eighty-one. It's really, really bottom line. So we need to learn more about the science, more about technology and engineering and art and the mess. Because this will be up to the students for the pre-education and, uh, build our future more, more powerful, more strong and, uh, I'm, uh, about the about, because, uh, I'm the only one issuing in the candidates and if I become, becomes a board member, I will be only one actions. This is very important for the action group to represent there in the board, school board member. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Karen Perez de Silva, your closing statement, please.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, community. Thank you, students, and thank you, um, candidates for being here today. In getting here today, I've learned to use my cultural wealth as a superpower to support my community. I've experienced immigrating to the United States as a child. I'm a multilingual English language learner. I've experienced elementary school as a special education student. I've lived in situational poverty and I've grown up in Oregon as a brown-skinned individual amongst a large white community. I have learned to navigate these systems and I want to use those skills to support my community at this time. I'm running for the Beaverton School Board Zone Two because I want to use my professional, educational and living cultural wealth to advocate for safe and culturally responsive schools and safe and culture responsive policies in our schools. The every student belong policy says that health and safety are the cornerstone of our education and that every student is entitled to a high-quality educational experience, free from discrimination or harassment, based on perceived race, color, religion, gender identity, sexual orientation, disability or national origin, and without fear of hatred, racism or violence. We have the right to have ethnic studies, tribal history, shared history, Holocaust curriculum, comprehensive health curriculum and other curriculums that are culturally affirming to our students and our community. Second, I want to address equity opportunities. Currently, like I said, over ten percent of our BSD students are failing, not passing or having completes right now. And the majority of those are students of color. Third, I want to ensure that our students have a voice in the school board and in our district. And our community also have, has a voice. It's a critical part and should be a critical part of our decision-making. At this time in history, more than ever, we need to step up for our students to ensure their safety, equity and opportunities that allow them to thrive and not just survive in our schools.
And now we will go to zone four. My apologies for that numerical mistake. We will start with Sunita Garg in zone four. Ms. Garg, you have two minutes.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you. It was really nice meeting all the candidates today and listening their views. I would like to vote for, I would like you to vote for me because I am committed and passionate about providing and working towards making sure that all the kids in Beaverton School District get good quality education. Everybody wants that. I want it. And I am going to work for it. I believe that my personal and professional experience is going to help me do that. I am going to work towards making five-day in-school learning for parents, for students, because parents are suffering. They want their kids to be in school. So if it is safe, then we need to work towards that. Educators want the kids to be in school because that's the better form of learning so that they can be in school and learn and learn and be with their teachers, ask questions and there are going to be learning gaps that we need to make sure we need to address. We need to have after-school programs, before-school programs so that kids can learn summer programs. And I would be honored to get your vote come this May eighteenth elections. Thank you.
And thank you. Sarah Lynn Dougal, you have two minutes to close it up.
Thank you and thank you for hosting this forum this evening. It was nice to be with everyone. It is clear that the school board and district does not put our children's education as the priority when they opted for return to hybrid instead of back to school full-time as other similarly large school districts like Bend and Medford are doing right now. Past behavior is an indicator of future behavior. If you want more of the same vote, excuse me, if you want more of the same, vote for those endorsed by the unions and current board members. If you want change, vote for Sarah Lynn Dougal, Fuha Chu and Jeanette Shada, who are not endorsed by, nor have they received money from the unions or the current school board. All schools need to be open full-time, safely and securely. All students matter and need to be treated as individuals who are challenged and encouraged and nurtured. All students should be supported to reach their fullest potential so they can compete nationally and globally. All student resource officers should be kept on site. We have a great school district, one of the best. We have intelligent, creative and committed teachers who challenge our children. I believe in the power of education. It is the only way to break down barriers and open up minds. I believe together we can do great things for all children and for our community and schools. That is why I am asking for your vote. Thank you.
And thank you. And last but not least, we go to the candidates in zone one. Jeanette Shada, you have two minutes for your closing statement.
It was a pleasure to be here this evening and thank you, Eric, and everybody else to put this together. As your next school board member, I will work tirelessly to get our kids back into the classroom for a full five days. I will work with all families to incorporate inclusive ethnic studies that teachers, students, parents, community members and board members either develop together or purchase after a vetting process, which will help all community members within the BSD school boundaries feel welcomed and accepted for their individual and unique qualities, talents and background with no critical race theory ideology. We need to do what Dr. King stated, to judge a person by the content of their character and not by the immutable quality of skin color. I will also work with my fellow board members and the district health committee to find a sex ed health curriculum that is age-appropriate, honors Aaron's Law and works within the confines of health or other science classes. Parents will also have the opportunity to review all curriculum and opt their child out without any restrictions on the district's end as parents are the ultimate drivers of their children's educational needs. Lastly, I will work with my fellow board members, students, teachers, parents and community members to build back the basics, which will also include incorporating levels of classes for all learners, no matter their ability level, and build the career and technical education program to be more robust and retain more students for graduation and to give them employable skills. We must have an inclusive atmosphere that is unifying, safe, strong and supportive for all and not a few. And with that, I also want to address the slanderous lie that is going out about me that is using the BSD logo. Please, students, stop spreading that lie. It is a slanderous lie put out by Antifa.
And thank you for your statement. Susan Greenberg, two minutes, please.
Thank you so much for the opportunity today and Eric, thank you for, uh, being the moderator. In my time on the board, I've worked to successively add increased support for struggling students. I fought for more funding for our schools. I've worked to create more inclusive and safe school environments and I've advocated for more affordable housing for homeless youth. I'm proud of this record of progress and hope to have your vote to keep making progress for our kids during this challenging time. I believe in supporting students of different backgrounds in schools and equity should be a top priority in our halls. We should work to end biases in schools and support students from all backgrounds. In addition to returning children to schools safely and ensuring a smooth recovery from this pandemic, my priorities are being a voice for the underserved students and providing the resources needed to support at-risk students for success, adding programs for college prep, music and math, using equity-based decision-making to meet the needs of students of color and providing additional supports for students with emotional well-being, for students emotional well-being and mental health. And thank you so very much for this opportunity.
And thank you, Ms. Greenberg. Well, a very interesting and dare I say, educational evening has just come to a conclusion. Thank you, candidates, for your participation in the Beaverton School District Candidates Forum. We appreciated your presence tonight. I will remind all of us that ballots have to be submitted on or before May the eighteenth. And I sincerely ask my fellow voters to vote. Every vote does indeed count. My sincere thanks to the ladies who did the heavy lifting on this event. They are the Beaverton School District's communications team. Shelley Bailey Shaw, Cara Young and Melissa Larson, you did a fabulous job. And my biggest thanks go to those of you who tuned in tonight to learn more about what's going on in the Beaverton School District. With that, I'm Eric Schmidt. Good night.